Okay, good afternoon. This is going to be our first 2021 budget workshop. Today is August the 19th and I will call this session to order, this workshop, budget workshop session to order. Turn it over to Ms. Sarah Andrews.
Good afternoon, N A R council.
I want to turn on your mic.
Yeah. The light's on. Is it loud?
There we go. Okay. All right, if you give me one second, I'll put this out on the website so y'all can see While I'm doing this, Tom, do you want to talk about the timeline and why we're here so in a rush?
So, we had a conversation with Carroll County PAC's assessor.
I don't believe your mic's on.
Back in June, I'd say, and we were told that because of COVID and whatever, that they had not met to make some decisions about valuations and that we would probably not get final digest numbers until September the 1st, which is when the millage rate is due back to them. So what we've done is worked with preliminary numbers, knowing that we're going to have to set a millage and deliver it back to the county before the county even gives us the final numbers. But next Tuesday is a special call meeting to set the millage. And so today and tomorrow, what we're hoping to do is to go through enough of the information so that there's a comfort level was set in the millage. And then we'll have from August the 25th until some point toward the end of September to go through enough of the rest of the detail to actually approve a budget. So that's where we are today.
Okay, if you go out to the Villarica website, under Finance and City Budgets, you should see the link there for the presentation. Yes. You good?
No, I haven't gotten there yet. Tell me where it is again.
If you go to...
Right here.
I do have that.
Villarica.org, Services.
Okay.
And then Finance.
Okay.
And then Budget.
All right. And that's the workshop, 8:19, right at the top.
Yes.
Okay, I'm there.
All right.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank y'all for being here. So we're going to have two days of fun. Today, we're going to kind of do the high-level overview of the budget, then we'll get into the personnel changes that we have included in this budget. We'll talk self-funded insurance, then we'll spend a bit, we have over $9 million in capital projects that we'll look at today, and then we'll talk about debt service. And at that point, if y'all have questions, if we want to start looking at the book in specific departments, we can do that. And then day two, Tom's going to do more talking. He'll discuss some of our primary and secondary goals for the city, talking about growth, the millage rate, possible cuts, and questions. So we have a full two days, but I don't know if we'll be here eight hours. All right, kind of high level. And if y'all want to, in your book, you can, if you flip past the title page, you'll see our summary page for the budget. So that shows all the funds that are included in the budget. And each column shows a different fund. The top section is the source of funds or the revenue. The bottom section is the use of funds or the expenditures, and then that bottom line tells you if we balanced or not. So every fund is balanced except general fund, and we'll get more into that later. But overall, the total expenditures that we're proposing is $36.9 million, as you can see in the pie chart on your PowerPoint. Half of that is general fund, that is our biggest fund for the city. And then about a quarter piece of the pie is our water and sewer fund, and it goes down from there. Splot funds, sanitation fund is also one of our other large funds and self-funded. So that's just kind of the overall picture of our city budget. This slide shows the increase from last year to right now, the proposed 21 budget. So the green column shows the 2020 budget as amended. I've brought y'all amendments throughout the year. So that green column and what you see listed as a 2020 budget in your book is the amended budget that we've worked on this year. So then the blue column on this chart shows you the proposed budget. Now, with some changes we've added this week, we show a 13% increase in the general fund expenditures compared to last year. Water and sewer is a 4% increase compared to last year, and sanitation is a 3% increase compared to last year. So just some kind of high-level notes for the revenues. This budget that we're showing you has a 6.25 millage rate. Remember that we advertised a 6.5, we've budgeted a 6.25 millage rate, and Tom will talk more about millage tomorrow. Part of the delay with the budget is, you know, we don't know what's necessarily going to happen next year, and particularly with our facilities that were closed this year, at least for part of the year, we lost revenue on that. So when we look forward at next year was, you know, we were not entirely sure how to budget for revenue in that arena for next year. So in the end, we did add back 50% of recreation revenue, so we're hoping for 50% participation throughout the year, and we included 40% of the Pine Mountain Gold Museum revenue. And that 50% and 40% of what we budgeted last year. We also have in our revenue 100,000 LCI grants that we were awarded a few months ago, and this budget does not have rate increases for water and sewer and sanitation at this point. Okay, some items in the expenditures sections that I wanted to point out. This budget, we did include a $100,000 contingency in the council's budget. We kept all the employees that we had this year, so we didn't show any layoffs or furloughs in this budget. And with that, we didn't have to pay out any unemployment insurance, so none of those things are in this budget. We've continued improvements to salaries so that we can continue hiring and retaining good employees and continuing the maintenance that we've been doing the past couple of years for current facilities. So we have quite a bit of that in this budget. With COVID, we lost our inmate crews, and so we've had to add temporary employees, which is more costly than the inmate crews. So we have budgeted for temporary employees for, for instance, grounds, the grounds maintenance. We have temporary employees working for us this year to help with mowing and things. Also, so in the revenue side, we show the LCI grant of 100,000. Well, I'm showing the expenditure side of that, which is 120,000, and so the extra 20,000 is what our match is for that. And I'm just giving y'all kind of the highlights at this point, we'll get more into the detail soon. Another one I wanted to point out is, so over the last five years, we have paid 50,000 to Carroll Tomorrow every year. Well, the end of our five years is up, so we have one more quarter that falls into the next fiscal year, so we'll be paying 12,500 for Q4 of 2020, and then we haven't included any more. So just wanted to point that out. We also divided up, this is more of a kind of an accounting thing, but we divided up recreation so we could, I guess, have some more understanding of how that department functions and how the money works out. So in the past, we've had Recreation Admin and Athletics all in one group, and all the programs too. And at one point, we had split out the events, but then we moved most of the events to Main Street. So that, splitting that out didn't really work out the way I expected it to. So we've done a better division this year in this budget. So we have a department or division for Recreation Admin, Recreation Athletics, and then Recreation Events and Programs. So that'll look different this year, where you'll see big percentage changes in some departments, or you'll see one that had no activity in the previous few years. That is where that came from. We split it up a little bit better. So then we can see, how is athletics doing? How is events and programs doing? Tom has been working with Charlie and Nick to come up with a comprehensive list of all the building and grounds maintenance projects that need to be done within the city, and so we were able to plug those numbers in yesterday as part of what is driving our big increase in the general fund. So $675,000 in projects for those items that are included in the general fund. Some of them are maintenance, some of them are capital, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. Also, we've added the Butterballs renovation for $1 million. We don't have anywhere else for that to come out of, so it's in the general fund as well. And then we've also added Punkin Town Engineering. So this is just the engineering pieces, not the construction piece, but we've added 120,000 for that. Okay. So at this point, I wanted to get into more detail with the personnel section. So overall, our personnel for the whole city is 11.4 million. Last year was 11.1 million, so we've had a 3% increase in that. If you look at the pie chart, you can see the majority of personnel is in general fund, and we do have a significant amount in the water sewer fund. So in this budget, we have added two positions, we've upgraded four positions, but we have removed two positions as well. The two positions that were added, one was in the general fund, and this is a maintenance tech for the Building and Fleet Department. So he needed help anyway, and now we've added a bunch of additional projects that I just mentioned. So that 53,000, that is the full-in cost, so that is salary, estimated insurance, and taxes and things. And then the other position we have added is a crew leader for distribution and collection. So that 60,000 is all in. That's the salary, insurance, and taxes and things. So that third, adding that crew leader would give this department three crew leaders, so he could have three individual crews. I think he wants to have one to do water, one to do sewer, and one to do proactive maintenance type stuff. So, you know, bulking up these crews because we've, you know, we've done a better job of maintaining things in the past couple of years. There's more work to do. As I mentioned, we have removed two positions. So over the last couple of years, we've added a park ranger position, well, two park ranger positions, which have never been filled. So what we're proposing is to take those out for a savings of $47,000. And then, I should have reworked this slide, but two of the upgrades we want to make is to change those two park rangers to program assistants. When we talked to Courtney in the Recreation Department, what he was describing for what he wanted as program assistants, you know, somebody to be there late after hours and lockup and things, those were kind of the things we wanted the park ranger to do. So when we talked more about it, it made more sense to make the park rangers become program assistants. So that's what we proposed here.
So these are not new hires? These are, are they part-time?
Yeah.
So these are two part-time program assistant positions?
Yes.
And they would be new hires? They are not currently on staff?
Correct.
Okay.
One of my operational issues is having buildings open at night with nobody there from the staff, or on the weekend, or whenever. It's just not healthy, and we've got to do something. But we have people at the Civic Center, Powell Park, and Goldust regularly at night and on the weekend, either classes, rentals, or whatever. And we just don't have enough people to cover it all, so two part-timers would help move us in that direction.
Okay.
The other two upgrades on this slide, the first one is IT technician. So this was a request last year, but the pay is too low for him to hire someone that he feels like he can trust and be a good addition to our team, so we're proposing to increase the pay. So that, it's still a part-time position, but we're increasing the pay for that position. So the cost on that is $7,000. And then lastly, we have a request to upgrade a part-time library assistant to a full-time library assistant. So that's what you see there. That 29,000 is to make that person a full-time position. So you're adding the hours at the current rate, but also you're adding insurance and taxes and things. So that is the addition to what the person, what that position is already costing us at a part-time position. So that is the addition. All right. Additionally, in this budget, we have Phase 3 of the salary study. So in 2018, the council hired a firm to come in and do a salary study. They looked at every position and compared it to other cities that were comparable in size, or cities that we would compete with in the area to hire people. So they brought back the list of what everybody should be making, and it wasn't necessarily based on the, we were trying to true-up or get the actual pay structure to the right place. So we've done two phases, one in 2018, that was the first big one that we did, and that affected almost, I think it was everybody but six employees, their salary was increased. Last year, we did Phase 2, that was still a decent amount of employees that were affected. Now we're down to, I don't know, 20 or less employees that still have an amount to be trued up, and so this is Phase 3 in order to fix the pay structure. We also have cost of living adjustments. 100,000 is about what it costs for a 1.5 COLA for everybody that's not getting at least 1.5% in that salary study. So that's similar to what we did last year. We had the Phase 2 of the salary study, and then we also had a COLA for anybody that didn't get at least 1.5% with the salary study. All right, Christmas pay, currently we have 53,000 in the budget. That is $300 for every full-time employee and 150 for every part-time employee. Or something we can discuss is, what is your philosophy on that? Do you want to keep it out of the operating budget? Or is it something that council would like to consider to use our self-funded savings towards a Christmas pay? Do you want to discuss that?
So she's asking for some feedback, if anybody has any. My memory is that last year, when this came up, it came up outside of the budget season, and the discussion amongst the council was that if this was going to be done, that it should be in the budget. So they are asking for some guidance here from council, if anyone has an opinion on whether or not to include this in the budget.
Is there any issue using...
I'm sorry?
Is your mic on?
You say what?
I say included.
Included in the budget. She says she would like to see it in the budget.
Coming out of the general fund or coming out of insurance savings?
Which one is more expedient?
Is there any issue using...
Is your mic on?
Yes, it's on, I just need to pull it a little closer. Using insurance money for a Christmas bonus? I mean, it's...
There may not be any.
Yeah, we might want to keep that insurance money off the side. We might have a bad year.
Yeah, we had such a good first year that we're not, let me see if I put this in perspective. So we, let's say that in the first year that we banked $600,000. Well, our total exposure in the second year was a million eight, let's say. And unlike the first year, where we budgeted 100% of our maximum exposure, in the second year, we only budgeted 90%. So our maximum exposure in the second year was about $180,000, but we had 600,000 in the bank. So we could have several bad years in a row and still have the cash to make up that 10% that we're not budgeting. And according to Wendell, what we should see is a five-year cycle. So we have a really good year, a really bad year, and several mediocre years. That would be a typical five-year cycle for health claims. We just happened to hit the really good year in the first year. But in our second and third year, we haven't seen much savings. So I think we're seeing the mediocre years, and we've inched up to what, Sarah? Seven something or eight something?
We're close to eight.
Yeah, so we're, you know, we've maybe accumulated almost 200,000 more in a couple of years, but you can see there's not much, you know, in growth compared to that first year.
We haven't had that bad year yet, so we...
We're due. So you figure in the next year or two, we're going to get popped.
So we should not use up our reserve.
If we were to spend 50,000 of the 60, and our maximum exposure is 200,000 or less, even if we have that bad year and we eat 200,000 of it, you know, we still got, you know, $550,000 left.
But...
If we're starting at eight.
Part of the reduction in savings were other things that we did with the money to benefit the employees. We changed the co-pays and we did Fitbits and stuff like that. So that ate into some of the savings we would have seen if we hadn't done, if we had left everything the same.
We spent 20 on Fitbits? Yeah, we spent 20,000 on Fitbits.
And I don't have a problem with that. I wear one, so, you know, and not a city one, but I don't have a problem with that. I just say, you know, the picture is a little bit different because we use some of that money to help the employees with co-pays and things like that. My question was back in the technicalities, is this savings, it's undesignedated? Are there no restrictions on what it's used for?
It's our money.
No legal restrictions?
Right.
It's just money out there we can, okay.
Yeah.
We're just keeping up with it because we want to see it internally. It's not being regulated in any way. We choose how to regulate that money. So we can do with it whatever we choose to. We should just use our own judgment when we do it.
My thinking about using the self-funded and why it relates to the Christmas pay is, to me, that would give us an additional carrot to encourage the staff to use the insurance plan wisely. Because my thinking is, we would agree to some maximum amount as the Christmas bonus. So let's say that 53,000 is the maximum, and we, let's say that we split that 50/50 with the savings in the plan. So we would have to have a year where we saved at least 106,000 in order for the employees to get a $50,000 Christmas bonus, right? But if we save less than 106, then the 53,000 number would drop, right? So it gives the employees some skin in the game, whereas right now, like almost everybody else, there's not a consequence to misusing the plan, either individually or corporately. So in most health insurance plans, there's no cost consciousness, there's no shopping like you would for a car. When we go to the doctor, it's like, whatever, what do you charge? You're not only not cost comparing, you're not even aware of the cost, period. Or another situation that comes up is you go to the doctor, and the doctor sends out lab work to a facility that's not in our plan, and it costs four times more, right? Or you go in for imaging, if you do it at the hospital, it could be 10 times more expensive than the imaging center. Well, right now, we don't have a good mechanism to encourage the good behavior or penalize the bad behavior, so at least this would give us the beginning of some kind of corporate, you know, carrot to encourage that. See what I'm saying? We've still got a long, long way to go to educate, because we're still learning where the gotchas are, but we know that lab testing and imaging are two of the places where there's a huge disparity between where you go and what you pay.
The concept of doing that actually is appealing to me. The problem, I think, lies in that we don't have any guidelines like that. We have no way to advise the employees right now to be able to do that in a way that they can be effective. If the council chooses to put this in the budget or to leave it for another day to look at, I have no, I'm not going to have any concern with that, but how it gets paid for. If you're going to tie it to the wellness program, which is similar to what you're talking about, I actually like that idea. But we'd have to have some guidelines, some benchmarks, so that they would understand how to handle that. So I think you could look at that, but I have no problem with it coming out of the general fund either, if that's what the council chooses to do. I think the concern was last year that it showed up sort of at the last minute, it was an unbudgeted item, and then we ended up doing nothing for the employees, which didn't seem like a good option either. So, does anybody else have any comments?
I just want to say, I like, I too also like the idea of tying it in with the insurance savings. But I think when it comes to informing or educating the employees, most of the time, I think an employee or anybody, when I go to the doctor, my doctor says, "Go across the hall and go get this test done." I don't ask the doctor, "Okay, is there a cheaper way to do this?" And, you know, I think a lot of folks just don't realize that you don't have to go across the hall because an MRI here or down the street is the same, you're just, but the price could be different. So I would like to see some efforts on educating the employees, not just on their options, but also in making sure they're aware that, yeah, if you want a holiday Christmas bonus at the end of the year, you're going to have to make, you and your family are going to have to make an effort to be educated on what your options are and have a conversation with your doctor, say, "Well, doc, do I really have to go to LabCorp or can I go to Quest?" That kind of thing, so. My only other concern though is, so our maximum exposure on the self-funded insurance is $200,000, and we have approximately, is that what, that's what you said earlier?
It's 2 million.
It's 2 million, okay.
But we insure that.
We have stock gap insurance.
Right, we have umbrella on the whole plan. We're only budgeting 90% of it. That's our exposure, right?
10%.
And so if we do have some horrific year, that would essentially wipe out, no?
It would take out 200 grand.
Why, where's the 200 grand number come from then?
10% of 2 million.
I see, okay.
So the actuary at the beginning of, before the year starts says, you know, "Here's your census, this is what we think you're going to spend, we think it's going to be 2 million," and that's claims and admin. And so we look at that and say, "Well, we don't think we're going to hit the max. We're going to budget 90% of that, so we'll budget a million eight instead of 2 million," right? Well, that helps the general fund, that helps water and sewer, because we're not putting it in the budget to begin with, but our umbrella coverage is for 2 million. So anything over 2 million, the umbrella pays, which we've never had happen. But if we happen to go all the way to 2 million, we're going to, the city is going to pay that 200,000 in addition to the budget.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
But it would come out of this.
The savings.
Right. So it would eat that 800,000 up down to 600,000.
I see that.
And that should happen once here in the next two or three years, if the cycle, you know, proves to be true.
We have it, is that insurance in here anywhere?
It's actually going to be covered in the PowerPoint next.
Yes. I think taking it out of the insurance fund is probably a good thing because it will address all of the concerns and all of the complaints about water and sewer paying a Christmas bonus after the rates being raised, and they're saying, "You raised my rate so you can pay a bonus to employees." That solves that problem. My other comment is, you said 50...
My other comment is, you said fifty-fifty, and you, you said a hundred and six thousand, fifty percent is fifty-three. What if it was two hundred thousand savings, is it still fifty-fifty, or do you put limits on that?
I would think you'd put a cap on the max that the, that the employee would get. But that's just me talking, I mean, y'all haven't had this conversation. And you really hadn't had a chance to think about it either, so you'd have to think about it. But fifty-three thousand, this happens to be what, a three hundred one fifty bonus would cost us? And that's, you know, that's reasonable. When I was in Fairbend, what we did one year was we did a three hundred at Christmas time, and then I, I've told you that we would do a mid-year review. And if we had a really good first six months, which was most of our rev, it's probably three-fourths of our revenue came in the first six months because we were on the same year, we did another three hundred dollar bonus in June, right? Because we were having a good year. And that's the thing that I think is one of the disconnects in the government, is there's not a relationship between how you're performing and, and compensation, right? You go to work for a government, you do a good job, you get paid, you do a bad job, you get paid. You come to work every day, you get paid, you don't come to work every day, you get paid. You know, I mean, there's, you know?
That's where the merit comes in.
Yeah, just no, no, no government does that well, you know, because governments don't have the ability to bonus. In fact, we shouldn't call it a bonus, we call it an incentive. Because really, in Georgia, a government giving a bonus is, I think, illegal, so.
Well, it doesn't say bonus in, on here anyway.
I say it though, and I shouldn't.
Yeah, okay, I under, so I think there's a consensus that we like, whether or not it ends up in this budget, I don't know yet. But we like the idea of it being tied to some type of a performance. I like the idea very much, and I, I think I hear that from a majority on the council. So let's go ahead and move on, but we, we will come back to this as we get a little closer to adopting a budget.
Okay. All right, self-funded insurance. Thank you for segueing into that, Tom. All right, so if you look in your, your budget workbook, it's page ninety shows the expenditure side of that fund.
What page is that?
Page ninety. All right, so as we've discussed, this year we have, it's almost two million, one point nine five million dollars in expense for the whole plan. Of that dollar amount, five hundred and fifty-two thousand of that is administrative. Remember, we pay a third party to administer that for us, there's other components of it. There's some other insurances that we have that cover us, that's included in there. The wellness piece, we have a, like a prescription company that helps us get the best prices on the prescriptions, that sort of thing. That's what's in the administrative, and also wellness. So when we do blood tests or the, the Fitbit cost, that would all be included in there. Now, this, the, the box on the right, the one point four million estimated claims, that's what Tom was referring to. The actuaries come back to us and say, "This is what you are at risk for losing." Now, the bottom one is the total. So they tell us, this year they told us, one point five-six million was the amount that you could possibly lose when it comes to the actual claims. So we budget ninety percent of that, which is how we got the one point four. So that green box where I'm pointing to those two purple boxes, the difference between these two is a hundred and sixty thousand in the savings that remained in the general fund, the water and sewer fund, because we didn't budget that in the departments as far as insurance goes.
Yeah, ignore my comment about the two hundred thousand, it's one sixty. Because we're budgeting a hundred percent of administrative, right? Because it doesn't float. It's a per-person, per-month fixed set of numbers.
So any other questions?
We had no budget amendments in this fund last year, right?
Correct.
And we're actually, the, the percent change looks like it's going to, that was the year before. That looks like we're actually going to be budgeting five percent less in this fund this year.
Yes, so we met with our, we met with Wendell a month ago, a couple of weeks ago. Anyway, he's brought us some different ideas, possibly using a third-party administrator. And I think that'll be coming to you at the next meeting. But with that, he was proposing that we'll have some cost savings, so that's the way we budgeted it.
Okay.
On that page, we would add an item for the Christmas thing, Christmas money? Is that what we do? Did it show up somewhere?
Right.
Yes, it would come out of this fund.
Okay.
Or is that wrapped up in wellness?
Whatever we call it, it'd be a line item expense in that fund.
All right, any other questions on the self-funded insurance plan? All right.
I'll give you, for instance, something else we could do. Let's say that we wanted everybody to have a gym membership. It would, it'd get paid out of that, let's say it costs ten bucks per employee per month. That's where it would go.
And we actually have talked about that a little bit, too. Okay, you want to go ahead, Sarah?
Moving on, let's talk capital requests. In your book, if you turn to page twenty-four, this is the full list. I'm not going to go line by line, I'm going to present it a little bit differently. But if you want to see the detail behind some of the summaries that I'll show you, it's here on this page, page twenty-four. All right, so I'm going to kind of do this in categories this year in our budget. As far as vehicles go, we have included six police vehicles for a total of three hundred and twenty-four thousand. That is the full expense, that's the vehicle, that is the cameras, the laptops, the radios, the lights, sirens, all that. So that is all-in cost for six vehicles, three hundred and twenty-four thousand. The next item is three pickup trucks. So we have found the larger pickup trucks, for instance, like an F-350 seems to work better for the crews. So those, those are actually three of the bigger trucks. And then the last vehicle that we have in this budget is an ATV for the North Plant, for eleven thousand.
Well, let's, let's stop just for a minute. So on the vehicles, on the police vehicles, in the detail on page twenty-five, you're showing vehicles with laptops and in-car video systems, but in parentheses, you have six. But you have this listed three times.
I'm showing the, in that detail, I'm showing how it's being paid for. So with police cars, we're paying partly Douglas County SPOLOST, partly Carroll County SPOLOST, and partly General Fund.
Right, but you have a six. Is this how much is coming out of each of these funds to fund just the six cars? Because it looks like six, six, and six.
Yeah, it looks like eighteen.
It looks like eighteen.
No, sorry.
Yeah.
It is, the three of those add up to that three hundred and twenty-four thousand, which covers the six cars.
Okay, yeah, but it doesn't break out to correlate with our PowerPoint to make it look as though you add those three together and go. Okay, so that's the three hundred and twenty-four thousand. Eighty-eight thousand of that is coming out of Douglas County SPOLOST. Ninety-four thousand four hundred two is coming out of Carroll County SPOLOST. And a hundred and forty-one thousand is coming out of general fund for a total of three hundred and twenty-four thousand for six new police cars with laptops. Okay, go ahead to the pickup trucks.
Okay, so again, that's three pickup trucks, those are extended cab, like an F-350-type truck, and then an ATV for the North Plant. So total vehicle purchases, four hundred and seventy-three thousand.
So think about what six police cars is when you have forty officers.
Well, we've been buying about five cars a year, so we should be getting close to everybody having a new car by now.
We still have a couple of?
Yeah, not yet, I mean, you got to do it for seven years.
Well, we've been doing it for?
This is my fourth year.
And we've done it every year.
I think so, so we're more than halfway there.
But by the time you get through it, then you start replacing?
By the time we get through is our own cars.
Yeah. Well, but now, some just came out, they're ready now, five of them?
Five or six, and we should have them in a month.
Okay, and then this will be for next year.
And then this is next year, which we don't know what delivery will be like. But you can see what a huge impact on the fleet we've had. What you don't see is what that does to the garage. Because when we buy six a year and we're pushing the older ones out the bottom, what that does is takes that load off of the, the couple of guys that we have available to work in the garage so that they're not having to take an eighty thousand, or a hundred thousand, or a hundred and twenty thousand dollar car, or mile car, and keep it running because we're cycling them. So what we've done has been really, really effective, even though we're not there yet, you know, we're more than halfway there.
If we're budgeting six cars with forty officers, that means we, we expect the car to last about seven years? Is that, is that average?
Are we getting seven years out of a car?
No, I don't know that we average that, plus we're, you know, we're losing at least one or two a year to wrecks.
So?
So we're not doing too much, is my point.
If a car lasts five years for forty officers, that means we need to get eight a year.
Right.
Plus wrecks.
Plus damages.
Yeah, it's, we're, it's a tough, it's a tough cycle to be in, but we're making progress, we just got to keep doing it.
And that's another reason to not pay it out of SPOLOST, if it's just going to become part of our budget every year. Once we get everybody with a new car, and then we're going to start over again, then we don't want to rely on SPOLOST for those vehicles, if this is going to be part of our regular budget. So it'd be good to get away from SPOLOST on those.
Yeah, that's another long-range goal.
Yeah.
Is to be a hundred percent general fund, so that if we ever lose either one or both of the SPOLOST, you know, our public safety is covered.
We're not on the proverbial river with no paddle. So that's, that's all the vehicles and the, this total of four hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Where's the ATV, is it, what page is it on?
It's at the North Plant, so if you go down to the sewer section, page twenty-seven, says John Deere Gator for North Plant.
Okay, that's the ATV.
Twenty-seven in the book.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, we approved that two-city council meetings ago.
They had one this year for the West Plant, I think. All right. So the next slide shows the equipment that we're, we have in this budget. The first item is ten radios for the police, then we have three body cameras also for the police, and then six laptops for the police. So the radios that we had are no longer serviceable, so they've been trying to do a few a year. I think we did about that many the last year. So trying to get the, the old ones out, since they will not be serviceable any longer, and give them new ones. Next is a pump for the pond at Pine Mountain Gold Museum for five thousand. And then the Streets Department has requested a salt spreader for ten thousand. And also below that is a sign machine for forty thousand, so that we could start making our own signs. And then lastly, Douglas County Fire and EMS, that is the amount that we have to pay out of our SPOLOST towards their capital projects.
Tell me about that sign machine.
So what Bobby is telling me is that a seventy-dollar stop sign is a fifty, a fifteen-dollar material cost. And we have a big backlog of sign replacements because it's just too expensive to do. And so what he's proposing is that we bring that in-house so that we can make them ourselves.
Okay. And it, seventy dollars, did you say seventy dollars versus fifteen dollars in materials? Okay, so there are other reasons to have this, I don't know what the backlog is of signs, but I can tell you that a few years ago, we looked at upgrading and updating all of the signage in Mirror Lake, and we were looking at a substantial cost there, maybe in the two hundred thousand dollar range. I think that we decided not to move forward on that because of it. But obviously, if we're able to do it for a fraction of that, we might end up doing that. It's one of the reasons why some of our enforcement, you know, runs into a problem over in Mirror Lake, so. All right, anybody else have any questions on this capital equipment?
Do we have somebody who could, that's knowledgeable in operating a machine like this, or on staff? Or is this going to be a?
Just Bobby, we'd have to have somebody trained to use it.
This is all the signs, the street signs, stop signs, yield signs, all the signs in the city.
Yeah, and we, and we have an issue out there that we don't talk about. And that is that we've allowed a couple of neighborhoods to build
Their own signs.
With, with non-standard signs. I don't think that was a good idea.
Let's get back to Montahan's question, is this a training issue or a new hire issue?
Yes, thank you.
For the equipment?
Exactly. Can we take a current person and just train them to do this?
I think initially we would, but if we, once we figure out what we're doing and we get into the process of replacing everything, then yeah, it'll probably take a full-time person until we get through replacing everything the first time. And the way, that's not how we want to do anything, like, look at the radios, you know?